Good afternoon, everybody. We're gonna start our meetings as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll have Allison.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham Commission. We leave November 2nd. We're gonna go, Katie Casey is here in the room. We got Leila. We got Allison. We got Commissioner Coyle, Commissioner Gaddu in the room. And then, in Zoom land, we have June Gates. We have Sheriff Casillas. And who else is in that room?
Katherine Mann.
Katherine Mann. And then we have filling in for Jason Smith is.
Elaine.
Elaine. And then we have Jason Henry. What's, is this something next to Jason, or is that just?
No, that's his eagle.
Oh. Oh, that's his eagle. Okay, alright. Alright, so I think I've got everybody. So we're gonna start with our opening's legal services with civil matters.
I move to authorize the Chair to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Smith and Wesson and you nine Sheriff.
Thank you, Leila, for this. Thank you. I move to authorize the High Sheriff to review, evaluate proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vehicle upfit.
I move to authorize the High Sheriff to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Remodel the residence dining and main kitchen.
I move to award the proposal for remodel of the residential dining and main kitchen in the Ernest P. Barca Assistant Living Community to Wellesley Design Consultants for an amount not to exceed $104,100 for Phase 1 of the project as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services and further authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Well, just strictly within budget, we use Wellesley for a number of the other projects, and they've done a really nice job. And I actually looked a little, the nice thing about what a lot of this money is going towards, if you look at the breakdown, a lot of it was for flooring, for ceilings, for light, lighting, so all more infrastructure stuff as opposed to just furniture. So when we're looking at what this is like, floor cover.
Further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Consent agenda.
I move, well, first, I move to approve the October 26, 2023, public and non-public community notes.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Is there any additions, subtractions, or comments? Here on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Adult medical daycare payout report is in our packets, information on. And anyone wanna talk about that at all, or what's that? Alright, so now we're gonna go on to accounts payable list.
I move to approve the November 2nd, 2023 accounts payable list total of $3,265,366.31.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Okay, so I'm reviewing the warrant from, presented from private construction. And I'll note that there's a duplicate. In the, in the Novus group, $1,800 was just twice in our packet. I don't think that it was duplicated in the actual payout. So there's no significant problem there. But I do have some questions on some of the expenses that they didn't give us any backup on. This might sound silly, but the drop one portables of $300, there's three of them. They cost $220, but without a receipt, I can't tell whether 300 is a discount and, you know, that's really for two, or I have no idea because there's no backup. We spent $700 at WB Mason. I have no idea what that's for. Are we supposed to be paying for meals? They've got a meal charge of $248. I can't imagine why we're paying for meals as part of our construction contract. And I don't know if we'll see more of that. And because we have a orderatory among buying alcohol as part of our expenses. So again, I don't have a receipt, so I have no idea if that's a reasonable expense. We went to a company called Ballets, spent $1,400 in Nashville. I don't know what that's for. And we have expenses of $10,920 for concrete labor from a company, Ferret A L I C. I have no idea what that's all about because we don't have any backup on that either.
With concrete?
It was concrete labor. There's other services for concrete and stuff. There's a lot of the bigger things were accurately presented to us, and I was pleased with that. But I can't support paying this without the backup. I've asked for it before. You guys can shut me out by just getting them to send all the invoices, but otherwise, I'm a no vote on the AP for that reason.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyle.
I think we don't need to be having this. Like, this is like a broken record.
It was a groundhog day.
We, the amount that, I mean, again, we're not entitled to all the invoices. What you're talking about is, you know, I'm trying, without seeing exactly what you have and trying to view, small concrete labor, that's like for the foundation, which is exactly where we're working on, and it's just consistent with our minutes. As I see it, everything seems is being checked, looks good. You know, the total amount that you're citing in, in problems is like, I mean.
For about 25 grand.
That's, I think it's.
Well, there's a whole bunch. I didn't list every single one.
Well, I mean, 10,900 of concrete, so we're working on foundations. But regardless.
I'm not, I don't know.
Alright, hold on a second.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I don't know that these, these expenses are reasonable or not reasonable, but we are entitled to get the, all of the receipts so that we know what we're paying for. You know, the meals thing kind of sticks right out for me. It's only 248 bucks, but you know, we scrutinize all the other departments for spending. Why would we spend 248 bucks on meals?
Well, I challenge you on the level of scrutiny. Do you, you don't take, you're not going through every project with every invoice for every.
All over this one.
But, so you're picking and choosing what you want to do. You say you go through it for everything. We don't.
I spot checked. Well, that's just, that's, you're right. That's my choice. I've spot checked other warrants and I see plenty of backup on those. And if I spot check again, I bet if I pulled a few of those out, I'd see all the receipts. I don't have the receipts yet. And they should be given to me. I know, it's really dumb.
This is what we're debating.
No, what we're debating is that they didn't give me the receipt for it. Why are they hiding this from?
From you, from you. You keep saying from me, like it's.
From the county. Nobody in the county knows.
Not realized. Not very good.
So that's why, that's my explanation for why I'm not approving it because I expect to get the receipts and I'm not ready. So that's it.
No discussion?
There's no more to it.
Alright, so on the motion to approve the AP list, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Gaddu?
No.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Alright, we is on updates. I'm gonna go to Commissioner Coyle.
Sure. Over in long-term care, we had one positive employee for COVID. There is a vaccination clinic coming up at the end of this month for residents and staff. This week, it was kind of fun, obviously Halloween, and there is a really fun thing that happens in the nursing home where some kids come in and they trick or treat to the residents who have candy to give out. And it's been a standing tradition here, and obviously, it wasn't always done with COVID, so it was nice to see it back. And it's really a fun celebratory event for both the residents and the kids and the staff. So that was really, really something fun event. Just like this scare pose, I think it's, these are the things that really make it nice for the residents, walking through, seeing those things. Just nice to celebrate the holidays. It's a sense of tradition. And we also have a number of people heading to the, to Chicago next week or the, or this week. There's the National Leading Age Conference, which has historically been a really valuable conference, a lot of new ideas, collaboration, so that's good. Over at the Department of Corrections, they are COVID-free, which is, it's been a sort of long fall. And, you know, people have not been able to come into the jail. So it is very good for lawyers, family members, everybody alike, that they can now get back to visits at the jail, which is always a good thing, even now with lockdown. The population is at 164. We have definitely seen that increase and it's staying at a, you know, roughly, I would say, 10% increase from where we've been. We are kind of excited to report that the case manager position is being filled. And I just wanted to say that last week, for any department heads who didn't get the opportunity to stay for the full presentation by Kevin Moore and Superintendent Henry about the treatment program, the STAR program, moving from a 28-day program to a 90-day program. It was so, I found it so invigorating and exciting and really like state-of-the-art in terms of how we are addressing treatment and really cognitive-based treatment for, I mean, it's just, it's really like great progressive work to help our community members where we have a real shortage of drug treatment options. So I think it's very exciting, a part of the new building that we're getting some of these concepts, that we're getting the programs underway now so that by the time we roll into the new building, we'll be ready for it. So it just made me excited about the new building and just about the prospects to help our community. Finance, busy as usual. The, we just got, Emily got us another grant, the Loose Place Grant. The maximum you can get is $10,000, and we got the grant for 9,700, and this will go towards archiving records, which is really nice because not just, obviously, we have the statutory obligation to archive records over in Registry of Deeds, but we're also working on archiving records for some of the old commissioners' records and things like that. And it's really nice to look at their history, and even better, we can get a grant to help us do. The queue, the first quarter of reporting is complete. That ended the, all of the reporting requirements. That has been largely completed. There's a little bit left for rental assistance, but otherwise, we're wrapping that up. We have a few new applications for nonprofits, so maybe we should talk about putting that on the agenda for next week. And I think, I guess we'll talk about it within the, we have a, the finance has a contract for fine art evaluation. And that's because the finance is requiring the county to have a fine arts exposure schedule, and that's due in April. So we're in the springtime, so we gotta get that, all of our artwork in here and elsewhere.
Other corrections, though, back up, back up that I saw, is calling this portrait behind me, Daniel Webster. It's not Daniel Webster, just.
Something like Webster.
Does anyone know who it is?
Pierce, yeah, Franklin Pierce.
Only president from New Hampshire. Anyway, I did not see that, and I was like, I think it's Webster. But anyway.
So.
Give you a check.
That's it.
Okay. And Commissioner Gaddu?
I, I was informed by attorney Pat Conway that she was unable to join us today. She still has some follow-up appointments to make. And I also have been informed that I was bringing a check that we awarded to the Derry Community Fund for $3,000. That organization is dissolved. So I'm returning the checks to finance, and they're directing people to Salvation Army for the services that they were given before. But I had no one to get a check to, so I'll return that. I'm sure we'll find some other worthy people to get the ARCO money. And I don't have anything else to report besides that.
Alright, thank you. I, I'm gonna get light. I'm gonna let my department heads do their thing as typically I usually do. So we can save some time so we can have everybody. Okay, so now I'm gonna go to facilities chain border request.
I move to approve a change for a request for Lincoln Fencing LLC for an amount not to exceed $1,275. That's recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any more discussion?
So Jude, this is just to get the one more fence gate over at the top where the, the.
Around the lagoon.
Yeah.
Yes, that's it. It's the last one.
That's great.
Just become so much more security conscious. The more, it was months ago we put out the RFP, but the more we looked at it, we thought, you know what? Just to close that final loop for 1275, if it's okay with the board, it seemed prudent.
Yeah, especially if they're doing all the work, and especially around, it seems like primets would like us too.
Agreed.
Early discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I agree with this.
Thank you.
We're on to, we're on to Cincinnati. Delary only has the service.
I move to approve the Delary Master Services Agreement and Statement of Work as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and further authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Discussion? No? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Or yes? Schlegel, Schlegel Fine Art Consulting.
I move to approve the Schlegel Fine Art Consulting LLC appraisal services quote in agreement for an insurance appraisal for finance as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and further authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
This is just one of the screw-ups we've been talking about, about how we have to have this exposure assessment done prior to the spring of 24. Then just removing it some.
They should go with the new building.
Right.
Go by us, go by us.
Precisely. Huge.
Okay, further discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
This is rule rate changes?
Yeah.
I move to approve a change to the monthly earned time approval rates to be increased to the next highest quarter hour increment. Further, to approve a one-time rounding of all current earned time and holiday time between balances that are not already in a quarter hour increment up to the nearest quarter hour increment as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and human Senior Director of Finance. Don't hold my words, sorry.
Motion's been made. Do I get a second?
Second, seconded. Any discussion?
This is just, just for everyone's edification. This is simply for, to make the accounting and the, of these things easier. But it's good to know for everybody that we're rounding up. So you're, everybody is getting the benefit of the increase, so, yes.
Further discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Amendments of voluntary M and A training addendums.
I move to approve paying a long-term care employee CD up to eight hours at their base hourly rate of pay on days they are not able to work due to the clinical instruction portion of the M and A training program as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Which is the name of the seconded. Discussion?
Very.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm just a question exactly. Why, is it just eight hours? One-time eight hours?
So we just pay for what's due for their clinical hours when they're in the program, you're paying for the program. But it was originally thought it was six hours, and it turns out it's like eight. So it's just to correct.
So they get a correction.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Employee retention and engagement wellness item?
I move to approve the county's wellness funds for the purchase of 500 caps at an approximate cost of $3,300 from an from the account number. And this is, I don't think we have to specifically reference the account number. The wellness funds as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Well, it's the wellness fund that we're losing, right?
It's our wellness.
Yes.
This is not, I'm gonna go for.
No tax band money?
It's not the signature.
No.
Okay.
It's our wellness.
That way I can purchase it for everybody.
And how much do we have in our ones?
I think it's 20,000 or 25,000.
Okay, that sounds right. I can look when I go back.
I did use some for one of the buses, so I think we're down to around 14,000 or 15,000. And are we getting the Rockingham County logos?
It's not the logo. It's gonna say Rockingham County.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Further discussion?
It's cold.
Part of the holiday.
Holiday.
On the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Exception request, seven board and deeds.
I move to approve an exception request for personnel policy 7-4 for a registry of deeds employee PA as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and register of deeds.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion?
Just for.
We just touched that. I'm happy.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, we're, this is to address confidentiality issues and bring deeper alignment to the job function responsibilities.
Further discussions? Not on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Temporary medical position?
I move to approve the temporary non-benefit eligible temp staff medical contracted nursing staff review position at an approximate hourly rate of $26, $28 an hour effective October 12, 2023 through June 30 of 2024. We just associated employer expenses to be paid from the long-term care staff salary.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion?
This is just to deal, address the increased demands to, with all the onboarding of our temp staff because we have so many tempers now. So this will help take care of some of those obligations, and we have enough in the, in the salary line given the circumstances that are, so.
Further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care, travel and training request.
Yes, I move to approve the travel and training request for five long-term care employees, MMS, KM, TR, VR, and JP to attend the Point Click Care Summit held in Aurora, Louisiana, February 25th to 28th, 2024, at an estimated total cost of $12,869 as recommended by Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second. I think we made it seconded. Is there any discussion there?
Uh.
Commissioner Gaddu?
I'm just hoping somebody brings me back, that Ben Yeh from Louisiana, that's all.
Well, I mean. I think the Point Click Care, I mean, where everything is moving to electronic records, that having a number of people, it's kind of getting, getting being really burst in, there are electronic records management systems. And frankly, for, like, five people, it's pretty, pretty decent.
We'll all be on the same page. It's good.
Yeah.
Alright. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
We should make, yes, I vote yes. Okay, we're now at the department head updates.
I'm just really super busy. We have a lot of wellness initiatives. We have a lot of other things going on with some of the things that we just approved. Just trying to work with the union agents on that to get that finalized and back to the board, a couple of MOUs. And we're just getting ready for a delivery of some delicious chocolates that should happen next week. So we'll be in chocolate heaven. If anyone just wants to come buy our building, they'll probably smell it on the outside. We'll get those over to everybody. We'll start moving those over to the children's apartments with the Board of Commissioners holiday card. Thank you.
Very good.
What if we tell you, you will carry them over?
I think you all will.
End up with a few left.
I'm gonna go to Kathy, and for the record, Kathy Stacey is coming to join us, so.
Thank you. We've had a couple of big stamps recently, one in Portsmouth, $4,001,001 in Hampton, 4.5, which is a boar's head. I will tell you that yesterday I had a plan come in for EverSource. It's a huge solar farm in Kingston. Huge.
Kingston? Well, that's, that's the actual electric companies own solar.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just glad to be interested in knowing that. It's, it's quite substantial.
Yeah.
So other than that, everything's same old, same old in my office. Thank you.
Good question for you, Kathy. Really, do you think the lawsuit that came out of yesterday from the MLS system and the big brokerages, real estate brokerage is gonna affect numbers in the future?
No.
You don't think so?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Alright. I'm gonna go to Tiffany.
Finance, things are going well. Commissioner Coyle basically.
Stole your thunder. It's okay, you can say it.
No, that's it. No, no. Everyone's working hard on the Kronos implementation. We're working hard with HR for that. Still undergoing the FY '22 audit. We're pushing the auditors to try to wrap this up, but we can only go as fast as it will allow us to. Other than that, business as usual, yeah.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to June Gates. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. All's well in facilities operations. I have nothing significantly new to report. We're still very much in the throes of a couple of big projects, the dish machine, the two bundles down at the jail, et cetera, et cetera. All's going well. They had 45 guys at the job site Tuesday, so they're really working very hard on our new building. Four out of the five people that we invited to do monitoring of their wells have said yes, please. So I think we'll start taking action on that next week, working with DES. All is well. Thank you.
Just a quick question on that. If we're testing people's wells, do we have to put out a bid for rendering those services? Because it's, it's up to us that we have to test for them, right? Or do individual homeowners test and they just get reimbursed?
No, it's the, the, it's part, it's part of the contract that we have with Novus. It's part of all of the well number four work that's being done, and these particular pieces are being done at the behest of DES. So they've already, the protocol's already there, and it's the same people that are doing the well are gonna be doing the monitoring of the V abattoir's wells.
Okay, alright, so we're on to.
And we've also had successful safety inspections of the, of our job site thus far.
Regularly, yeah.
Yeah, regularly.
It's going very, very well.
That aspect of the building.
Yeah. Harvey is really well reputed for being a very safe company. It's, it's nice because it lets them to really suck in some great subs that want to be on safe job sites. So it's, it's working out very well for us.
Very good. Thanks, Jude.
Thank you.
I go to Elaine now. Long-term, yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jason apologizes for not being here. He's not feeling so well. He's come in a couple of days sick, and we finally sent him home. Because none of us want to get sick. We're doing well over here. As Commissioner Coyle said, we had a wonderful celebration for our trick or treat. The children came in and residents were happy. Some of the residents were dressed up. It was quite fun to see. We also had a pumpkin carving contest, so that's in the works. We had a meeting with Creative, the marketing team that we're working with, and that went really well recently. Trying to think of what else. We have several initiatives coming down the line, so that's all I have to report right now.
Alright, thank you, Elaine.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna go to the Sheriff's Department.
Good afternoon. Good news here that we have four conditional offers for dispatch.
Wow.
Oh, yeah. So if this works out right, we're gonna be down one dispatch position.
Wow.
So, so I appreciate the, the hard work of you guys working on that MOU for us to get these people trained, get them in place, and it'll, it'll work all fine. But another note, Deputy Greeley, today was a sad, oh, last night was a sad night. The 31st was the last night because Beards for Bucks stopped at the end of the night. So everybody had to shave around here. But I, I am proud to say that one of our deputies, Michael Greeley, every year, he raised over $20,000 for the CAC. He was the top, he was the top guy for the, for the state. He raised the most money. So I'm very, I'm very impressed with him. Every year, he pulls, he pulls it through. So that's about it. We'll, we continue to be busy, and we'll see you tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Jason Henry. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Actually, things are just moving along over here. Nothing really new to report, and I'll see you guys tonight.
Alright. All right.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Leila, do you ever been here? Did you want to share?
Nothing to report this week.
Okay, very good. All right, so now we're gonna do business, all business, same, I mean, same.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, Leila and I do, um, on facility usage. Um, we had, um, as you know, the um, American Red Class is supposed to be in tomorrow. Their legal team had sent us over some um, requests for the indemnification language to change somewhat. Um, which I was a little surprised about, but it came through. Um, I'll pass that out. Uh, I sent it over to Leila, who thankfully in turn sent it over to Mike Ricker. Um, we got it back and we can tell them what they said, Mike.
Yeah, he said, he said it's, it doesn't change any of the, the, the legality of it. It's just, it, it says the same thing, just in a different way.
Basically, so we would accept it just for that group, um, and then our form would go back to what it is. Um, but the problem I'm having right now is Red Frost is um, they have one account manager that's kind of doing it for the whole region. And we've been back and forth trying to get them to sign off on the agreement form, and I apologize, she's been on the road and getting access to stuff, so I will have that uh, agreement form. I'm hoping they're gonna show up tomorrow, because this is kind of held up a little bit. I assume they are, but we will not have the signed uh, lease agreement form, because it's just.
You can do a verbal countdown.
So I'm hoping you will do that, and then I will, if they're here tomorrow, I'll bring the form over and have to sign it to Leila and sign it.
Is there anyone that didn't jump out at you, anyone?
No, I mean, I just, it just seems exactly to that point, like, it's just a verbage, not a.
Okay. So, so do you, do you just need a verbal?
No, I'll make a vote. Move to approve the application of the, for the American Red Class usage.
I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Not on the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
All right, so we're not charging them the money, but that doesn't prove that we're gonna get a settlement there on the.
We're gonna, we're gonna get that soon.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, but it's just.
So, pending, I will say, pending, I guess, maybe I should rephrase the motion. Um, Leila, I'm sorry, they ended up not sending it to me and Jessica, they sent it to Leila, so they did have it signed. I apologize. Thank you.
I know, did you send it? Did you send this to us?
Yeah, it had it in our updated internal agenda.
Okay.
I thought there was something else, because I saw, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Any other new business in the? No, okay, all right, we go to public comment, if anybody in the public wishes to speak?
We don't have any idea.
No, but I just have a, I'm just, just so the recording of YouTube, YouTube people watching would know that I'm asking for public comment. Um, seeing nobody, let's move on to, we're gonna go non-public.
All right, I move to enter into non-public, during to R S A ninety-one, May, Collins, three, section two regarding personnel matters.
Second.
Motion's been made, a seconded discussion?
So, um.
On motion, Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
So, yes.
I think it's Katie and myself alone, and. Um, we, we took up four issues in non-public. And the third issue is with respect to some paid administrative leave. And I uh, moved to see those minutes indefinitely, because it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Second, motion's been made, a seconded. To see those minutes indefinitely, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And then on the last thing we took up, I moved to see those minutes indefinitely, because um, because it has some implications to HIPAA.
Second, motion made, seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
Should, can I go do?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. And I move to approve paying benefits eligible county employees a one-time discretionary bonus in a gross amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per employee less applicable with.
Second, motion's been made, a seconded, um, any discussion?
Yes, it's nice to honor employees at the holidays.
Yeah, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
Uh, oh, yes.
And with that.
Unless you want to stay and chat more?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
There was a guy, hi. Good.
See you later.